A meeting number eighteen is now called to order. This is September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. It is five thirty P.M. We're in the Thomas J. Smith Council chambers. Would you all please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, give me a roll call, please.
Phillips?
Here.
Graham Murray?
Here.
McCamell?
Here.
Rinker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Okay, I have for fact one mayor's award winner tonight, so we'll open up with that. I like to give these out for people that are doing, are movers and shakers in Burlington, doing things that need to be recognized, and I'm glad to be recognizing you tonight. Be it known on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment to the B-Town Block Party is truly a commitment to children, the families in the neighborhoods, and the city of Burlington. You give of your time, efforts, and money, and it makes, I'm sorry, reading too fast. You give of your time, efforts, and money, and it means a lot to me personally and to this city council. Keep up the good work, and know that you help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On September seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, this mayor's award is presented to Victor Moore. Come on down. You're doing, you're doing a good job. I was glad to recognize you, but you really recognize yourself by stepping up. I'm just giving you a piece of paper, my friend. All right, good. Thank you. Would you have a word, please?
Hi, my name is Victor Moore, and I'm the head organizer of the B-Town Block Party here in Burlington, Iowa. I'm over three parks here in Burlington, Sunnerson Park, Gladys White Park, and Stone Gate Park. Different events goes on at all three of these parks, and kids in the community with the B-Town Block Party consist of leading these kids to Christ and bringing, catching these kids, bringing them into Christ where we can show these kids how much we appreciate them and trying to turn their life around, you know? So that's what this B-Town Block Party is all about, you know? Reaching out to these kids in the community, probably have no way to go, and trying to teach them the right way to go, just like Proverbs twenty in the Bible says, you know, "Train up a child, and with it will the way the child will go." And that's what we're trying to do, you know? Lead these kids in the right direction, the way they should go, and not see them being the trouble out here in the community, you know? So that's why we put on these events, so we can have these kids something to do in the community, you know, there's something not, doing something positive or something that's not, they're not doing anything in the community, you know? We're trying to keep them on the positive side of the fence and guide them in the right direction, you know, get their life on track, you know? So I appreciate all the churches that came involved with this, with this B-Town Block Party, Grace, Grace.
United Methodist.
Methodist Church, First Assembly of God, and Hope Community.
New Fellowship.
New Fellowship Christian Church, so, excuse me.
It's all right.
But I'd like to thank them, and plus, I'd like to thank ads also for being a part of it this year and everything, and I'd like to thank the fire department, Burlington Fire Department, and the police department for coming out and being amongst the kids also, you know? So I greatly accept this award and all appreciation, and for the city council, all the council members, and I appreciate this, and thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Okay, and I don't see Robert down here, so, Robert, I have this for you. I can send it out in the mail, and we appreciate you, and I'm gonna go ahead and read it. "On behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. You and your fellow employees were the recent recipients of some real bad news, and instead of speaking out for yourself, you spoke out loudly for your coworkers, and that is to be commended. I can respect that, and you helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On September seventeenth," I don't know when you're gonna get it, "but today I'd like to recognize Robert Morrison, so we appreciate, we appreciate what you do in Burlington." All right, and now we have some ten-year awards.
Yes, I have a certificate of recognition and grateful recognition of thirty years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington as of August seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen. We hereby present Lyle Rossen with a certificate of recognition, signed Shane A. McCamell, Mayor.
Lyle Rossen. Thirty years, that's a long time. Tell me about it. It was a youngster when you started, of course.
Absolutely.
Everybody, let's, let's all, thirty years, let's all get in on this. Can I get, Mr. Tisland, can we get your assistance?
Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't ready.
Here's your first serving.
Uh, no.
Have a word, sir.
Lyle Rossen, seven oh seven Black Hawk, I'm here to talk about your chairs. Kitty.
He wouldn't be the first.
We just gave you a bracelet. I'm kidding. But it's been thirty years, and I've saved up a few things, so I've got a binder. We got a time limit here this evening, or?
He's also a comedian, yeah. He's been saving up for thirty years.
That's right. Thirty years ago last month, I walked into Station One, and a whole new world was opened up to me. I was not a kid that grew up dreaming of being a firefighter. I really had no idea what I was getting myself into. I went to Northeast Missouri State after high school. After struggling to pay tuition and living on ramen noodles, I knew I better get a job, save some money, and maybe I could go back. NMSU thought so much of that idea, they changed the name of the college at Truman State to a racist state, and I left upon that institution. I worked at Atlas Warehouse moving furniture, poured concrete, and I drove a truck. I was laid off from that truck driving job when a friend told me they were going to take a test for the fire department in a couple days. I asked another friend about it, because I knew his dad was a firefighter. He says, "Great job, his dad and his grandfather had both been firefighters." That friend was Bill L., Jr. I took the test, which is held in a large lecture room at SCC, and it was packed with people. We don't have nearly that many people take that test nowadays. About a week later, I got a call, and he says, "Holy cow, dude, you got the top score on the test." His dad wanted to know a little bit about me. I thought, "Wow, no kidding? I need a break." And I was off to the next step, where I soundly defeated Roger Seifkin in the agility test. I got the best time, and he has never forgiven me for thirty years.
Love it.
I walked into the station that morning and sat down in front of Battalion Chief Bill Carlson. He gave me a stern lecture about what he expected from me, told me he was in charge and to emphasize a point. He says, "You see those tracks out there? I can stop a train anytime I want." Being duly intimidated, I was taken around the station and introduced to the most interesting set of characters I would ever meet: Warren Corman, Chris Ingram, Bob Voight, Randy Johnson, Frank Guyen, Craig Titus, Daryl Bailey, and many more. Over the years, I've been blessed to work with a very diverse group of people, all from different backgrounds and interests. I've worked with carpenters, mechanics, electronic techies, investment gurus, musicians, artists, equestrians, and even a couple thespians. All these people come together to form a machine, a machine that responds to life-threatening incidences. The machine is not built with identical parts. It's built with different parts that work together to form that machine. Those moving parts will cause friction, but camaraderie, a sense of duty, and a good personal foundation is the grease that keeps that machine moving. I want to remind my young brothers not to lose sense of that camaraderie. It's just as important to a satisfying, productive career as blind ambition. I've seen people at their worst, and I've seen people at their best on a regular basis. The worst are the victims. Injuries, shattered lives, destroyed homes. I've seen these things happen to people I grew up with, kids I've coached, and even a few relatives. That camaraderie and a healthy dose of gallows humor is how most of us cope. The best situations are watching my brothers respond and go into action mode when they know what they have to do, and they just get it done. Sometimes it's citizens trying to help, police officers doing their part, other professionals that are always ready to help. Living with your other family a third of your life can make for humorous situations. As Greg Smith will attest, you have to be careful what you say or do in the fire stations, and you're gonna hear about it for the next thirty years. Family can do that. Remember the "I can't stop, I can stop" train speech? Well, several years later, when Gene Wilkerson failed to get a train stopped when we had a fire that crossed the tracks, someone quipped to him, "Well, I guess you're not as powerful as Bill Carlson, because you couldn't get that train to stop until it was a quarter mile past the incident." We all got a good laugh, including Gene, and that was rare. For a young man who had no idea what he was getting into, I found the job and the lifestyle suited me. I liked helping people, the sense of purpose. I liked the team I was on. The career has given me a comfortable home, allowed me to raise four beautiful, healthy, and talented kids, and I'm grateful forever for that. I will admit that the more mundane parts of our job has been a little challenging for me. You can only wash a fire truck so many times before you question your choices in life. But I'm thankful in recent years, we finally stopped wiping horse poop off the truck tires on a nightly basis, and yes, that is a real thing. Early on in my career, I promised the guys that when I made chief, I was gonna burn all the chamois in the station. Well, now that I'm looking at the sunset of my career, I have to apologize to those guys, so it looks like I'm not gonna make chief. But somebody better guard those chamois on my last day. I wanna thank Bill Elf for giving me the opportunity, Bill Carlson for the excellent He was a taskmaster. He taught me about the importance of being part of the team and how to live in a fire station. I look around the station now, all the new faces, faces of kids that grew up with my kids, and I wonder, when did I become the old guy? I may not run the steps every day at Station One like I used to, but I sure don't feel like that old guy. For one quick clarification, Roger Seifkin did get the best time in the agility test, but it's been fun teasing him about it for thirty years. Closing, I'd like to borrow from the immortal poet Jimmy Buffett. Some of it's magic, and some of it's tragic, but it's been a good career all the way. Thank you.
Well said.
Well said. Your Honor, I have a certificate of recognition as well. In grateful recognition of thirty years of dedicated service to the city of Burlington as of September fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, we hereby present Mark Crooks with a certificate of recognition, signed Shane A. McCamell.
Please come up.
Wow, thirty years, I don't believe. I don't have anything written down like Lyle did. I mean, we were really hoping back there he wasn't gonna read that whole book, but I will add that Lyle is one of the best cooks I've ever been able to eat food that he has prepared. I'll tell you what, there for a while, you talk about the freshman fifteen. It didn't take long to put fifteen pounds on, but I remember that test. We walked in the room, there was over a hundred people in the room. Today, you're lucky if you get twenty. I was the second one hired off of that list, and it was quite an honor, just like it is today, to stand up here before you guys. I don't know why I'm emotional, but whatever. The day before I started, so September twelfth, nineteen eighty-eight, there was a fatality in Burlington upon North Street. My shift had that, and I came to work the next day. And so not only were they trying to come to grips with what had happened on their shift before, but they're trying to break in the beeper. And it was kinda interesting for me to, I had had four years of firefighting experience with West Burlington before I came down here, and within probably the first six to eight months of being on the job, I had already been to more fires in that amount of time than I had the previous four years with West Burlington. The experience that these guys have down here is just unbelievable. So I hope to think today that I bring enough to the table to show the new guys. Lyle and I were just talking, probably half our department's got less than five years on the job, and so the experience that we're bringing today is what those guys showed us when we walked in the door. So I hope to think in my current position that I am preventing a lot more fires than I go and extinguish. So anyway, I just, I get up every morning, and I thank God I'm able to come to work and do what I enjoy doing. So thank you very much.
We've got great staff, all right. Proclamation.
Yep. All right, I have a proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders work, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. And whereas an estimated two hundred thousand people in Iowa are affected by these conditions, and whereas to help more people to achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and Burlington, Iowa invite all residents of Burlington, Iowa to participate in National Recovery Month. And now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of September, two thousand and eighteen, as Recovery Month. In Burlington, Iowa, and call upon the people of Burlington to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities and ceremonies to support this year's Recovery Month theme. Join the Voices for Recovery. Invest in health, home, purpose, and community. Signed and sealed this seventeenth day of September, two thousand and eighteen, Shane A. McCamell, Mayor. This is presented to Brenda.
Brenda Ann Patterson's here.
Okay, very good.
We'll get them up. We got three, we'll get all three of them. There you go.
Thank you. Oh, sure. I'm a person of very few words, but I would like to recognize all of those who fight every day to maintain their recovery. It's a difficult battle, and it's very hard for them to do, so it's very important that we support them. That's it. Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you.
I wanna thank everybody for coming down. We're gonna get to the ugly stuff, so we'll let everybody, let you guys, if you wanna dip on out. Mr. Crooks, Mr. Rossen, thanks for coming down. Appreciate the crew as well. Victor, thank you, sir.
Next on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed are item one consent agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the city council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll, and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. And we have eight resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand and eighteen replacement of damaged disco's flood barriers. The third is a resolution approving an extension to the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and eighteen interchange of employee agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa, and Burlington Community School District. The fourth is a resolution of support for application to Iowa Economic Development Authority Main Street Iowa Challenge Grant. The fifth is a resolution approving the application of an Iowa Clean Air Attainment Program for Roosevelt Avenue. The sixth is a resolution approving the right-of-way permit process application and downtown parking fees. The seventh is a resolution approving fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen street finance report, road use tax. And the eighth is a resolution approving transfer of two hundred thousand of funds for costs associated with solid waste program card purchase. And then we have a public hearing set for October first. It'll be consideration of plans and specs for the two thousand and eighteen West Burlington and Agency Intersection Traffic Signal Detection. Is anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? I see none. Counsel?
Remove the two hundred thousand dollar transfer fee, or two hundred thousand dollar transfer of solid waste.
Number eight. Okay, can I get a motion?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under item one consent agenda with the exception of number eight, resolution approving transfer of two hundred thousand of funds for costs associated with the solid waste program card purchase.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCamell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. This is time for consideration of an ordinance, amending section one hundred point six, two point D, termination of the stormwater utility fee right-of-way of chapter one hundred, Stormwater Management and Drainage Systems Utility of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second. Do you need a second?
James?
One hundred point six, two D outlines what the definition of right-of-way is. Currently, it reads that it's public highways, roads, alleys, and railroad right-of-way to be exempt from the stormwater utility fee. This would add public airport runway right-of-way and public airport taxiway right-of-way to that exemption schedule. It's the only, only change associated with this, specifically in regards to the stormwater fee.
Sounds good. We've already been here, so. Any questions, concerns from the audience? Yes?
Mary Beard, Southeast Side Regional Airport Director. I have some letter for you all to look at here tonight. And on the backside is actually a drawing, which I will explain a little bit more about. What I'd like to talk.
That's my fault.
Thanks, Mary.
So at the work session on August thirteenth, the council suggested the removal of the runways and taxiways from the airport's stormwater impervious area calculation. Thank you for thinking about that. That was a big part of our fee assessment, but I'd like to further discuss with you about the definition of runways and taxiways. So I just would like it more clearly defined of what you would consider that. If you would look at the map, so this was the impervious map that was presented to me. The bubbles and the squares, all of those things are some things that I'd like to further discuss with you. Items numbered on this map, one, two, three, four, five, and six are our Federal Aviation Administration on Airport Visual and Lighting Aids, excuse me, Lighting Aids. They are required for the safe operation of the airports. For all purposes, they are equivalent to roadway lighting. Item number seven on the map, that's the pavement west of the terminal building, and it's around the hangars. We call that the aprons. They are utilized to provide free public services to corporate, general aviation, and commercial aircraft. Item number eight is actually the public entrance road to the airport, which is really equivalent to a frontage road. Item number nine is the parking lot east of the terminal building. It's free public parking, and I think that's similar to the free public parking at the Memorial Auditorium, the Port of Burlington, the Train Depot, and the library. Item number ten is actually the fire station. So although that property is deeded to the airport, the facility is actually occupied and maintained by the city of Burlington for essential city services. Item number eleven is the taxiway delta. And then the items number twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are all areas on the airport property that serve as stormwater detention systems for the city of Burlington water runoff. So I'd just like to say that the airport serves as public transportation of aircraft to the very same purpose as vehicles do on public roads and trains do on rails. The current stormwater fee plan exempts public highways, road, alley, and rail right-of-way, and I think the airport should be exempt as well. So I'd just like to ask you to consider revising the map for us to remove all of these other fees.
Do you guys have any questions for Mary?
So in addition to the language that's there right now, you're simply just wanting to exempt service roads and aprons, correct? In addition to what's there right now? And the fire station?
Parking lots, I would say. You know, I think that's free parking, like the rest of them. There's the taxiway that was still on the map that should be removed.
Wasn't the taxiways excluded?
It was not on my revised billing. It was not removed.
James?
The eleven is what you're talking about? They don't, when they were making that determination, they just, they didn't call that a taxiway? Do you taxi planes on that?
Absolutely.
That's one that you can probably have a discussion about getting that removed. I mean, just in the definition of taxiway, without changing any definition to what you're talking about.
Some of those areas are gravel. Not sure, I think you were talking about paved areas as well. Some of them are gravelled areas.
As far as gravel go, I remember having that conversation. Gravel over time becomes non-porous, which is why it's considered.
It's impervious, yeah.
Is it still? Okay. Can we get some direction, James? Or Nick?
Again, this is a compromise that was suggested from the attorney in how to deal with this, as he looked at different communities. I mean, there aren't too many places where an airport is in the city limits. There's, Davenport is one where they charge for the stormwater fee. I think there is another one that they listed where it is. They haven't seen this exemption really used this way, but it certainly is one that fits within the definitions with railroads. It just doesn't come up as something to have very often, but as they went through it, you're, I mean, practically speaking, what, if, go onto the exemption schedule that they're asking for, you might as well just be exempting the airport property in totality is what she's asking for, which is not, which is different from doing this ordinance change. That is not the preferred or recommended route from the attorney. This was the method to get the majority of the property out of the fee. But this is up to you on how you wanna deal with it. But this is up to you on how you want to deal with it. Now, in terms of what fits within the definition of what you could call taxiway or runway right-of-way, you can have some discussions about trying to include some of those pieces, but going too far and you're getting into a different type of discussion.
Fire station, are we going to charge a fee for the fire station?
Which we don't own, but...
That's my point.
Yeah.
I mean, technically into the system right now, we're going to charge them for the fire station.
I...
Okay. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I think, I think what I remember of the conversation was, is areas where they had no offense rental income. That was one of the areas that we were looking, that there ought to be some fee there. I remember that discussion.
The spirit of the conversation was directed solely at charging them only for spaces where there was rental income.
Right.
It wasn't necessarily, and I know we talked directly about taxiways, runways.
Yeah.
I am cool with 10 to 11, though. Yeah. Yeah, the rest of it, I just need to... Yeah, I have to give this some thought, but I'm definitely, yeah, I can see, I can see on number 11 that that would, that that would definitely need to...
If that fits within that, that does. And 10 is one that you can have a discussion, I think, without violating a whole lot when we're occupying a building.
But does seven, does seven count? I mean, that's part of a taxiway, isn't it?
It is part of a taxiway.
So that's where...
I'm not sure. I don't know where the right designation goes and some of it, I'm not sure what you're including to, around the private hangars, I don't know where that fits into that definition. I don't know how you...
I'm okay with this.
We don't have a great way to treat it.
No, no, I'm okay without this reach. I think we just need to sit down with Mary and define what is what.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can keep in mind, most generally, airports are operated and owned by the city entities, you know, and we are very, are one of the few small airports, regional airports, that are not designed that way.
Well, isn't, isn't the spirit of the ordinance to do that? And can't we just take this list and work on it and get the definitions from there afterwards? Or do we want to have this, do we want to have this set first? That's what I'm asking. Which way do you...
If you're doing right-of-way, you need to, if you can adjust, if we can adjust what gets counted as right-of-way, that's okay.
Okay.
But we have to be doing something that truly fits with, you know, within the definition.
But I mean, the original...
But you can interpret it that way.
Yeah.
The original ordinance, what I read, it excluded city buildings and police departments, fire stations, things like that. Wouldn't that building fall within that anyways?
Except it's not a city fire station. It's owned by the airport. It's a different ownership structure, but...
The property's owned by the airport. The FAA funded 95% of the building.
Yeah.
Is it one that we can probably get away with and be okay with it being for municipal...
I mean, at least if you average the calls, most of the calls service the city, they don't service the airport. So even on a percentage basis, I'd like to think that in the spirit of the ordinance that it would be exempt. Anyways, I think the ordinance itself is fine. I think it's just you need to sit down and define which part of the facility falls into which exemption.
I think we definitely need to have, have staff figure out what's taxiway, what isn't, so that we can, yeah, get a good definition so that we can look forward. Were you getting, already say something there? Okay. Did you guys have anything else to add on that?
No, I'd just say that, and I know a lot of people at home can't see this map and everybody in the crowd can't see this map, but there's a lot of space on here that is what I would consider to be taxiway, that is highlighted.
Well, we want to get a, just get a handle on that and find out what is and what isn't. But everything else, everybody's good, though. After we get that defined, everybody's good moving forward. Okay. Any other questions for Mary?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the audience? Mr. Blumer?
Hi, I'm Mike Blumer. I'm the administrator now for Aspen Grove Cemetery. So I guess I'm going to add another unique situation to the council in regards to the stormwater utility. I opened the bill a couple of months ago, noted that our bill had gone up about 3,700 percent from our original in regards to the stormwater. We've been around for about 175 years, and in that period of time, Aspen Grove Cemetery has grown to incorporate the city in a good working relationship. And also in that time, we've grown to 133 acres and we have about 11 miles of roadway within our facility. So one of the unique things that comes into play here is that during the construction of Sunnyside Avenue in 1926, the city developed that and utilized Aspen Grove Cemetery as their runoff for storm utility. So currently, we have approximately four city stormwater lines that are running through our cemetery and depositing water into Hawkeye Creek. So I'm well aware of what the code reads. I don't think the spirit of the code or the ordinance was set up regarding the uniqueness of what the cemetery has. I think what the council needs to look at, and I'm not here to appeal what the calculations are or anything like that. I guess what I'm looking at is that if they could actually look at a credit system for some of the businesses like ourselves in regards to this. Originally, we had a natural ravine system that ran through the cemetery, and so we, of course, are having some issues with some of the city lines that are coming through. So like I said, I, I'm not looking at an appeal. We fall within the letter of the law. I just don't think that we were set up in regards to what the spirit of the law actually was set up for.
Well, in discussions of this ordinance, I know we were talking about that eventually we were going to have a credit system for some of those things, and I believe that was, that's still in the plan. Is that not right, Nick?
A credit system is still in the works of being put into place, but in this specific instance, we have stormlines that do run into what is their property. There's really kind of a gray area on whose infrastructure is whose. I think Jesse should have been reaching out to you to talk about, we're willing to do some cost share participation on fixing some of the stormlines, but as far as a credit system for the actual stormlines on the property, it isn't really the intention, the intention of the credit system is to have, the credit system is to pay for retaining water on the property and not getting it into the tube to get it out to the creek. So this wouldn't really necessarily be a credit system application, more of a cost share between the city and Aspen Grove to improve the infrastructure when it's needed.
Part of that would be that you have some private stormwater needs within Aspen Grove itself, and part of it is that we do carry water across it, which is where there is a need to have a cost share on those lines.
Correct. And we've already looked at the project that they're talking about on doing a cost share.
But it's not a credit on the bill. Now, there are other things that we could do. I mean, the costs, the credits, this is one where, as Mary is making her presentation at the airport, we need to work out, are there improvements that are there for water containment that justify having a credit to the bill that we can, you know, justify having something to reduce our bill for that?
Well, in the airport's case, there are two retention ponds on site that the city did or the developer did when they did Mason Road.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And when we get that credit system in place, and those will be things that'll automatically be adjusted to their bill, right?
Well, we'll have to talk through who did what on regards to that and how we work through those details, but yeah.
And there are further improvements that could be made to those retention ponds because they're not quite large enough to handle all the runoff off Mason Road anyway.
Okay. Works for me. You guys good? Thank you, sir.
Frontage roads is another thing, and that's in regards to the size of your bill. A large piece of that is frontage roads. And they're, he's not the only property owner in town that deals with that. We have several places where we have frontage roads that are on private property. Most of the areas, if you think along Roosevelt, those, you've got frontage roads out there that are private roads and they're, whoever owns those is being assessed on it. It does add up quickly, but it's also a reflection of, as you develop, it has, it has a significant impact on our overall system and part of the reasons that we end up having larger stormwater events, unfortunately.
Same as we...
Very good.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Charlie Walsh, 1619 River Street, past Chairman of the Airport Authority. You talk about Davenport, Jim, that's not a commercial airport. We're one of seven in the state of Iowa, and I think this is totally a disgrace on Burlington. We have your retention ponds. You just heard it, two on the airport. And once again, it's a disgrace. This is a public utility that we're running here. Rail, why don't you get the freeway? Taxes state. I mean, this is disgrace. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other comments from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
What's the timeline for that credit system?
I don't want to rush the credit system because I know Waterworks has had some issues in some of the billing regards. I don't want to try and shove a credit system on top of a stormwater system that hasn't been, it's been difficult, I'll say that much. And then also you have the trash income, but sometime this fall, I want to make sure that all, everything's ironed out before we put the system into place.
But by year end, we can expect to see that, please?
I would hope so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We're good? Motion to close?
Well, so before we, before we do that, so where are we at then? We're in the first reading here, so we've got some work to do, figure, to try to work out an agreement here. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So if I move to close and we vote for the first, we're still have two more readings to go.
Well, but I think, I think we're okay on the language. It's just the definition.
Right.
And that'll be tightened up.
We'll get this tightened up beforehand and get some agreements made. Okay. Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Ready, second?
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of the ordinance amending Section 100.6.2. D, determination of a stormwater utility fee right-of-way of Chapter 100, Stormwater Management and Drainage Systems Utility of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward. Number two is a consideration of a facility use agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, CISA, three soccer fields at the Burlington Regional Recplex, continued from the September 4th, 2018 City Council meeting. And Mr. Teslin?
This is an agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy for use of practice fields, 5, 6 and 7, as shown on the map here, at the south end of the recplex, in exchange for a fee. And this is a 10-year term, effective upon approval through June 30th, 2028. At five years, there can, can be a meet and confer, I guess, is the term in the agreement, to negotiate the annual contribution fee for the duration of the term, provided such fee shall not exceed the fee established and by no more than 25% increase, which would be $500. But just to evaluate where we're at with costs and see if that fee, the $2,000 annual contribution still fits or if there needs to be an increase at that time. The $2,000 fee can be in the form of cash or mutually approved donation to the recplex through improvements or equipment. All equipment donated or improvements shall be first approved by the city, the recplex manager and/or parks director, benefit to the overall operation of the recplex and become property and ownership of Burlington. CISA will have first priority with respect to use of the fields, number 5, 6, 7, with the exception that if there are scheduled tournaments from Thursday through Sunday as needed, they would take precedence over CISA usage. Burlington's responsible for all field maintenance, mowing, turf care, irrigation maintenance, lighting maintenance, goal maintenance of the fields, and will move goals as needed. Basically, taking care of that, that area just as we take care of the existing reclex facility. CISA's responsible for keeping the fields in good condition. There will be normal wear and tear, but making sure they're cared for as best they can be. They agree to host no more than one soccer tournament at the recplex each season, which would be a minimum of 100 teams over two days. If there is a rain out or weather event that causes a reduction in schedule beyond their control, then that would not be a breach of contract. We do make every efforts to get as much of the tournament in each year, but if there is unforeseen weather, those cancellations or reductions are generally called by reclex staff there. $500 annual fee for light usage shall be incurred for the first five years and then it goes to $600 for the remaining five years. Other items, just parking, as allowed as we make parking improvements, that may change. Currently, parking back by the maintenance areas allowed, but as parking improvements to the new facility and the recplex facility, that may, just making sure we're up to date on that. And the agreement may be terminated for cause, which would be material breach of the agreement. Not something we foresee happening, but just, it would have to be for a breach of the contract, not just because we don't like it anymore. So that's kind of a brief summary of the agreement, and if you have any questions, I can try and answer, and there's some representatives from CISA here as well.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Teslin? Okay, the CISA reps, any questions? We're good?
All right.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
No questions, I'm in.
All right. We get a motion to close?
I move we close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution. But no glasses. Have a resolution approving a facility use agreement with Southeast Soccer Academy, or CESA, for use of fields at the Burlington Regional Recplex.
Second.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, well done. Thank you, gentlemen.
Your Honor, I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 105, Garbage and Solid Waste, and Chapter 106, Collection of Solid Waste of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Can I get a second, please?
Second, sorry.
Sorry.
Mr. Fitting?
Okay, this, this ordinance, proposed amended ordinance is recognizing the change in the program from citizen-owned carts and containers being used for the collection, set-out and collection of garbage to carts that are purchased and supplied by the City of Burlington. The lion's share of the language pertains to recognizing they are city-owned carts. I wanted to draw your attention specifically to the section under collection service being number four, where it identifies the three sizes of containers or carts that the city is purchasing and distributing to the citizenry. It's a 35-gallon cart, a 65-gallon cart and a 95-gallon cart. I also wanted to point out that in item number five, it indicates that the, limits the use of the trash tag that historically has been used in the city for additional trash that is in bags. for additional trash that is in bags only. In other words, citizens are not allowed to use their own cans, as they have in the past, and attach a trash tag to that item for us to collect. It's supposed to be in a thirty-three gallon bag, and then a trash tag attached to that. Also, going into the section on containers, one oh six point oh two, in item number one, it indicates that all the containers, the carts that are used in the collection, are to be the city-provided carts. We have people out there, again, who have relatively new garbage cans, even wheeled carts, wanting to be able to use those carts, and we are not allowing the use of the customer-owned cart or can. Also, in number two, under containers, it talks about that the garbage, the trash that is not inside the city-provided containers, will not be collected if it's not bagged and tagged. Again, once again, it needs to be bagged and tagged if it's not within the existing or the city-supplied cart. On the item number six, it talks about... Let's see here. No, I want to talk about item number five. It says that all garbage to be is to be in plastic bags to prevent liquids and other spillage, and this is supposed to be done before they place it in the cart. And again, we're talking about garbage, food-related material, putricible material, rotting, releasing liquids, attracting vermin. These types of materials are to be in a plastic bag, sealed, closed tightly, before it's placed in the cart. One of the two goals that the council had expressed an interest in is trying to reduce nuisances. Certainly, attraction of vermin and insects and odors and spillage are all contributors to nuisances. And so this type of material is to be bagged and sealed up before it's put into the cart. And then also, in that same item, item number five, it indicates that the lid of the cart is to be fully closed. That doesn't mean that it's partially open, and it's supposed to be fully closed. The lid is supposed to be resting on the rim or the seal of the cart, and that's intended, again, to limit the amount of nuisances that might otherwise be a result of garbage in that cart, as well as it keeps rainwater out of the cart. And item number six, it specifically states that keeping the cart clean is the responsibility of the resident. Even though the cart is owned by the city, the resident is expected to keep their cart clean and relatively sanitary, again, helping to keep down and control nuisances. In... Under collection fees, later on in the meeting today, there is a resolution that establishes a cost for carts that are stolen. And that will be something that will be discussed later. That's something that is required in this particular section of the ordinance. And then finally, we have struck from the ordinance the language pertaining to reduced base fee under property tax credit program.
Sounds good. Any questions? It's good done. Any questions from the audience? Past mayor, past councilman, Tim Scott.
Tim Scott, twenty seventeen South Fifteenth Street. I'm just gonna reiterate what I said last week, hopefully explain it a little better than I did. One, I don't believe that the public had an opportunity to compare the trash containers. And I'll explain. You had them out, and that's commendable that you thought of that and that you put them at the three different facilities around town. But I can tell you, there are people that don't know the difference between wastewater treatment facility and the water plant. There are people that don't know the difference between the wastewater treatment facility and the water department on Third Street. On Third Street, yes. They don't know the difference between that. One lady went to the water department and asked about the trash cans, and they said, "Well, we don't have them here. They're up at the... You can go see them at the library." And she commented, "Well, wouldn't this be a better place?" And they commented, "Well, we don't collect garbage." And she says, "Neither does the library." So, I mean, she made a... She made her point, and I thought it was a valid point. But I want to use myself maybe as a comparison to many, many others in this community. I go to work at five fifteen every morning, and I don't leave work a lot of times until six or seven o'clock at night. And I do this mostly seven days a week. And it's by my choice, and it's because of the upbringing that I had from my parents to believe that, in the Protestant ethic, work hard and prosper. And I really believe by working hard, that I might not get rich, but I'm gonna prosper. And when I go to work in the morning, I am amazed at the number of people that are already at work, number of small business owners that are already at work. And when I go home at night, those same business owners are still at work. I think a lot of this come about because of OSHA regulations and other things, but I think it also come about because of nuisances. And this is not gonna cure any of those people that are creating the nuisances. They don't give a darn. They just don't care. And it's... And that's sad, but I gotta get back to that, the part about not being able to see the containers. One gentleman told me that, you know, after he read the article, he ran out to Public Works. Public Works wasn't open on Sunday. He thought they'd be out front where they could see him. He didn't get the chance, and he didn't have a chance after that to go back and look at the containers. And the eight women that I mentioned last time, who were all widows, they didn't even know where City Hall was at, about half of them. When I said, you know, "Stop down at City Hall and let the staff know how you feel about it." And they didn't... Where's City Hall at? And sadly, even my wife still thinks that City Hall's a courthouse from time to time. With... She just wasn't a very political person and didn't get involved. But back to the sizes of the containers, to charge somebody thirty-five dollars, I think, is reasonable. After they've had an opportunity to find out whether these are gonna fit their needs. And if they were to give it... Be given a ninety-day waiver, and that was to be made very public, and let them get those exchanges out of the way, and then implement that fee, I think that's a much fairer approach. And it's... And it's not that people don't care that they didn't want to go down and see the different sizes. It's just a fact that a lot of them just don't have the time to work around the city's schedule. And I guess enough said. And I think the four-dollar fee, there was... On occasion, I had to use a tag. We filled two containers. And that wasn't so bad. On occasion, I might have to... I got the ninety-five gallon. On occasion, I might have another bag, because I'm not... Won't be able to get the lid closed. I'm not gonna be happy about paying four dollars. The people that are creating the nuisances aren't gonna pay the four dollars either. They're gonna go down to John's place, or to my place, or down to one of the city trash containers and throw them in the containers. Every day, if you walk the riverfront, every day you go down the riverfront, all the trash containers are filled. People bring their trash containers down there to dump them. So, I wish you would consider ninety-day... First ninety-day waiver of that thirty-five dollar fee, and then reconsidering that tag program. I mean, I... One of you had said a couple of weeks ago that the idea of that fee was to encourage people to use the... To go to the sixty-five gallon can, because of the prices makes it more economical to do that. It would cover one tag. I understand what your philosophy behind that, but it's not going to correct the people that's creating the nuisances that are talked about in the ordinance.
Tim, my thought process on the four dollars is, whether it was four dollars for a tag or four cents, people that don't want to participate aren't gonna participate. So, that's kind of where I'm at. I'm still there on that. On the ninety days, woo! It's a lot to swallow. You know, that's going through a lot of trash cans and leaving the door wide open, and I... That makes me nervous on ninety days. I just want you to know where I'm coming from right off the bat. I understand where you're coming from, but ninety days, I... Woo-hoo!
Tim, I don't think your request is unreasonable. I think ninety days is probably a little long, but then I would move to Dawn. I mean, Dawn, what impact would even having any type of waiver period have?
I'm thinking if you went with the ninety days, it would stretch out. Because I know the reason, Tim, that we didn't allow them just to switch willy-nilly, is that from a labor standpoint, it could be a nightmare. But perhaps if we stretched it out over three months, it wouldn't be overwhelming... You know, it wouldn't be a deadline. It would be, you try it for a week, and you're like, "Oh, goodness, this is way too small. I want to go larger." Or, I don't know, if people wouldn't all make the decision all at once? If it wouldn't snow the city? I know Dawn is going, "No, no, no." But it is hard sometimes to decide how much trash you're gonna generate. I know we have some weeks we hit it really good, and other weeks we're buying lots of tags. And it makes me growly to have to buy the tags, so I agree with you there.
I echo what you say about dumpsters. I've had dumpsters since I've been in Burlington, because we either had a business or worked with a business for them. None of my employees ever, ever used those dumpsters, and none of my family ever did. But we would have to dumpster dive from time to time to rip open a bag of trash and see whose name was on it. And then we'd call them up and give them a chance to come get it, or we'd call the law. And I don't think anything is ever gonna stop that. That's... If you're that type of person, I'm sorry, we're, you know, the only... We're not gonna be able to help that, period. I just think that's just in those people's DNA. I wish there was a magic wand, but that's... That's... I would agree with you on that, though it's a pain.
I just think that no matter what we do, we're not gonna be able to satisfy everyone, and you know that, obviously. You know, you bring up some great points, but I just think that we need to get going on this and get it settled. Unfortunately, I don't think... I think the stress of having an opportunity to switch out cans for free on the employees would... It would be a great stress, I think, trying to get all of them switched out, and who wanted what instead of this, and...
Well, somebody's gonna need a different can. They're gonna need a different can.
Yeah, absolutely.
If it's free for thirty-five dollars, it's all gonna come in the same way.
The point is that they will think about it a lot more.
The guideline is, is where you have a thirty-three gallon can now, we're telling them, if you want... If you're satisfied with that size can, you use thirty-five. I mean, it's pretty simple in that regard, because if that's what you use, fine. And then if you do generate a couple of... Two or three trash tags a month, then maybe you want to go to the sixty-five gallon, which is still, even at two dollars apiece, would still save the resident money. And that's why we went with that program. So, the guideline is, if you're happy with the can you have now, and you don't generate that very much, you go with the thirty-five gallon can. So, I mean, that's why it was structured that way, and we've had all kinds of meetings on it, because we were trying not to penalize the citizens, but also help out at the same time. So, I'm comfortable with where we're at, to be honest with you.
I think you're gonna be a little more surprised that there's gonna be half of those people that don't know anything about the program. They don't read the Hawkeye. They don't... The mail that... Like, card that they got in the mail went with the rest of the occupant mail that they get on a regular basis, that fill those trash cans pretty fast.
Yeah.
And don't... They didn't even read it. They don't, you know... It's... And that's sad, but that's... That happens. That happens, and there's gonna be an awful lot of people that are upset when they're said... When they're told it's gonna cost you thirty-five dollars to get that smaller can. And they're gonna see... First, they're gonna see the increase in their bill, because they're getting a sixty-five gallon can automatically. And then they're gonna want to switch, and they're gonna be told you're gonna pay thirty-five dollars. I think you're gonna have a lot of... You have a lot of phone calls about it. I've had a lot of phone calls about it, and I'm not even on council.
Sure. I understand.
Dawn, do you have any idea what the percentage would be? I know Davenport did have an opt-switch-out program.
I mean, is it even... No, I can't guess how many people would opt to change, to go larger, to go smaller. I don't have any idea. I can tell you that we have nearly three thousand thirty-fives that have been requested. And we had about, between eleven and twelve hundred ninety-fives requested. And the remaining was about half of them had requested the sixty-fives, and the other half were non-response. We had much, much fewer non-response than most of the experiences that the people... So, I think that the city did a very good job of getting the information out. I can't say that I recall having at all received a phone call from someone saying, "I can't get down to the locations where the carts are during office hours." Now, maybe people don't have access to the phone during their work hours. I was basically... Well, I'm there pretty much a lot of time, a lot of hours. But I know City Hall directed a lot of telephone calls to us, and I know the water department directed a lot of calls to us. People making inquiries about the trash carts and how the program... Lot of misunderstanding as to how the rates were going to work. And I would be very, very anxious if we were to open it up at this stage of the game and say, "Try it, if you like it. You know, if not, bring it back, and we'll exchange it." I don't really know what the order's been placed, based on what's been asked for. I will say that I've had a lot of conversations with two communities, and both communities have said people tend to go bigger, not smaller. And I have had people who are working in the field saying, "Don't let your council choose a thirty-five. You're gonna have a lot of headaches with a thirty-five." And they are going from thirty-fives to sixty-fives, and from sixty-fives to ninety-fives in the communities that I've been talking to. But just the dynamics of dealing with the telephone calls and taking carts out and exchanging them out, it would be, I think, a very difficult time. I understand that there are people out there who likely didn't get the information. I will say we had a higher percentage of replies than what's normal. We've spent a lot of time, made a lot of handouts that went out to people. But I don't think you can reach everybody. You just can't. I've had people tell me, "I don't take the Hawkeye. I don't listen to the radio. I don't talk to my neighbors. I don't read my mail." And I would say, "Well, how are we supposed to get the information to you?" Well, you can knock on the door, and my guys have gone to doors and knocked, knowing people are home, and they will not answer the door. So, it's difficult to educate the public. It very... It is. I understand the concerns, but I also feel like this is the program. This is what you approved. This is how we've proceeded. This is the information we've shared, and we've had people who call. We have had people call who said that they want to change their size of the cart, and we've said, "This will be a thirty-five dollar exchange fee," and they've accepted that. They take responsibility for not being informed or failing to submit their mailer in a timely manner.
I just want to add that it's... You know, I know you can pick apart, you know, nitpick and pick apart every decision that we make. It's... We just don't live in a perfect world, so I realize that this isn't gonna be perfect for everybody, but I think this is a... I think it's a good system, and as is. And, yeah, I think there may be a couple of people that may be upset, but that's pretty much standard fare with... Since I've been sitting on this chair, so it's not intentional. It's just we just have to try to make the best decision for the most people.
Counsel?
I think Dawn is nail on the head. I mean, I just... I think the practicality of trying to change out cans for an extended period, thirty days or ninety days, I don't think that's conducive to what we're trying to do here, so... I don't, I don't think that's conducive to what we're trying to do here. So.
Okay. Thank you, Dawn.
Thanks, Dawn. Thanks, Tim.
Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Number two.
Your Honor, I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending ordinance number three, one, two, nine. Being an ordinance creating the Diawalt Plaza PUD by making changes to section three point B point land use design criteria. And section five fifty-foot buffer park.
Second.
Open second. Mr. Tisland?
So this again applies to lot seven of the Diawalt Plaza. Um, under land use design criteria allows residential, including multifamily residential. Um, provided it falls all bulk regulations for R four zoning districts unless otherwise required within the PUD. Um, currently the PUD is zoned C one limited commercial. Um, as you transition further to the east, it is more residential surrounding that property. Um, and then the fifty-foot buffer park, uh, is if lot seven's developed as residential, then, um, per the rest of the PUD. Uh, there'd be a buffer park between residential and commercial and this would be thirty feet in width, uh, which would match similar to what's, uh, adjacent to the Edstone Middle School there. So, uh, those are only two changes to the PUD. Um, there is existing language on height in the PUD, but that's not what's, uh, being requested to be changed. It's here. It's just the allowance of residential on lot seven and then maintaining a buffer park between lot six and seven. Uh, this did go to the planning commission again and was voted four to zero to recommend approval, um, at their meeting in June.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
Charlie Walsh again. Airport. Uh, we've talked about this before. Uh, we've sent requests to the council. Where FAA, there's things that have been done in Burlington that do not pass the FAA rules. These are very questionable, uh, right now. And once again, I can only speak for myself. But a board member, we do not want this, or I do not want this to happen. Lot seven is way too close to the airport and the runway. And totally, I don't know what you people are thinking of, trying to get more tax dollars. I mean, this is a commercial airport. You don't build a home right at the end of the runway. I just do not understand your thinking. Once again, this is me talking. You have any questions for me?
I guess my, the only thing I'd ask Charlie, and we've asked this question already, is there's height restrictions that are in place currently for the PUD that exists today. Those aren't changing, correct?
Yep.
So anything that were to go there is still going to fall within the restrictions set by the FAA. And unless something's changed in the last week since we've talked about it.
We've talked to you before about extending the runway. And if you look where that's going, it's going out to the west.
And this is the first time I've heard about the extension of a runway. So.
We talked about that probably two years ago, three years ago, and you weren't here.
And we would need to extend the runway to bring larger planes in?
No, it's because of the, uh, National Guard facility. We've already cut the runway short already on the far east end because of intrusions of houses built off a parkway. So, you know, if we're going to keep what we have, we're going to extend it probably out to the west. And look where it's going to put it, just to draw a line.
Counsel?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Nay.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Resolutions, number one.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving a white box for a depot for Greer's Restaurant.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Tisland?
I don't know exactly who needs to speak on this, but, uh, this would be coming forward because, uh, as we tabled the subsequent, or the next resolution that's on the agenda. Which Nick will be talking about. Uh, this last week, uh, Economic Development Board met to discuss, uh, modifying the request. For funding to help support this project. The approved amount that had come out of the economic development front, fund or, or economic development portion of the local option sales tax was a hundred and twenty thousand previously. Uh, the request was to ask if they would consider to, uh, up to fifty thousand of additional funding to cover the base bid. They don't, the base bid doesn't need fifty thousand to cover the actual costs unless you, but you, to have an adequate for contingencies in there. Uh, we had a discussion about needing to go, to have about that amount to give you le, leeway for, just depending on what happens with construction. The Economic Development, uh, Board did approve, uh, that request. And it's being brought forward to you to authorize or essentially to ratify their agreement to use an additional fifty, up to additional fifty thousand dollars. Of that economic development portion of local option sales tax to, uh, finish off this, uh, white boxing effort.
Do you have any problem with, uh, with, uh, us using that fifty grand, James?
It's, uh, no, a couple of years ago, I would have been in a position saying that I, I didn't recommend doing this project without, I mean, I, just in terms of the. It's an awful lot of, I, I, I can't say that it makes sense or to spend this much money on a white boxing effort. Uh, especially when we don't have an actual agreement put forward that makes, that, that you can cost justify it off of. However, in this position where we are at this point, where we have gone through the design phase, we've gone out and gotten bids, we've spent money on the sewer lateral. Uh, we've gotten additional through the effort so that the, the prospective developer, really, we've gotten an additional seventy-five thousand dollars of grant funding from the state. Uh, it doesn't make sense at this point to stop a project based on, on the amount of shortfall that you have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, uh, from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Say, I agree with Jim. I think that's a conversation that should have been had, but it should have been had a couple of years ago. So we're committed to it at this point. So I'm okay with moving forward with it.
Counsel?
Good.
I'm good.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Abstain.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Resolution number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the two thousand eighteen depot white boxing.
Uh, continued from the previous meeting. Um, SG Construction was the low bid with the base bid of a hundred and seventy-two thousand sixty-three dollars.
Take a second on that.
I didn't interrupt, did I?
No.
I apologize if I did. Uh, with an alternative bid of eighteen thousand, uh, four hundred and thirty dollars for, uh, new framed windows and panes. Um, with the added fifty thousand to cover a contingency on that, my recommendation is changed to award bid to SG Construction for just the base bid. I would like to see the windows be corrected with this, but seeing as the money was kind of a, kind of an issue. I, I would not try and do that, that alternate number one.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Questions from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Abstain.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, number three.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving purchase of a fire engine for the Burlington Fire Department.
Second.
Who's doing that?
That's hoping there wasn't going to be any questions.
You're sleeping back there?
Uh, Cap Seller with the Burlington Fire Department. Um, we're just asking for approval, um, to sign the contract and get this moving forward. We would not take possession till after July first. I believe the contract says July fifteenth. And payment would also be at that time, but the bill time is eight to nine months, so.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none.
Again, this is a CIP item for fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, which is part of the reason you're looking at a vehicle being delivered in July, paid for in, in July. But with the lead time required to get that done, this is a timeframe to start that process. Uh, this would be, be paid for, uh, anticipated with bonded funds. Uh, we'll be doing a borrowing next, uh, spring, uh, to provide the funds to cover this.
Right on. Okay. Thank you, sir. Cap? Counsel, we're good?
Good.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Number four.
Your Honor, I have a resolution establishing, establishing solid waste fees for replacement of lost or stolen carts.
Second.
So, uh, as was pointed out by Dawn earlier, the ordinance does contemplate a fee for this. Uh, it has to be established by resolution. Uh, the fee that is established in here, and I'm again going with, without looking at it, fifty, is it fifty? For the thirty-five gallon, sixty for the sixty-five gallon and sixty-five for the ninety-five gallon container. Uh, it does allow for that fee to be waived with the, at the discretion of, is it me or staff?
It's all you, James.
It's all me.
It's all you.
Uh, with a, with a police report being filed on the first, first time it, it's done. And I don't anticipate this will occur very often, but we do want to have a, at least something in place for this. We're going to provide, if we're going to waive the fee, there has to be some justification for doing it.
No, just a quick question. If the, the cans themselves have a, infer, have a, some kind of chip in them or some way to identify it?
They, they had some options on that. So what did you do with that, Dawn? They all have a serial number on it.
The carts, each cart has a nine, uh, digit serial number associated with it. Um, as they deliver the carts, which starts next Monday. Um, they record the social security number, not social security, the serial number.
What's your social security? It's been a long haul, Dawn.
Serial number with each residence, uh, and that's provided to us in a database. Um, it's also got, what do they call the barcode thing on it? We had the option to have a radio frequency ID chip installed on each cart. Some of the larger communities do that, but they probably spend somewhere in a neighborhood of thirty to forty thousand dollars a year. On the software and the hardware to support that. Uh, they register the time and date and location of where the cart was. And what the cart was and that it was dumped. Um, we did not see that as a necessity. I am pursuing a technology that they have that utilizes, uh, a software program. A remote device that will record the barcode or the, uh, the, uh, serial number. And, um, it'll help us control our inventory going in, carts going in, carts going out. Can help us locate carts that have been moved from point A to point B. And so we do have a mechanism that is going to help us with our inventory control. I've talked to a couple, uh, places that are utilizing that, uh, technology. One of them is, uh, much smaller than us and they find it very, very beneficial. So.
When did you say the new carts were coming, Dawn?
They're supposed to start delivering, it's hard for me to believe this, but they said, uh, next Monday, the September twenty-fourth, they'll be pulling in to Burlington with new carts. And I believe throughout the week, they'll be bringing carts in, into the following week. Uh, my understanding is they're starting on Monday's route, a crew in Monday, a crew in Tuesday's route. On that first day, the twenty-fourth, and they're anticipating up to two weeks to deliver the carts. Carts are delivered to curbside, even if it's garbage collected in the alley. It's in curbside is where the cart will be delivered. So you need to be looking out your front window once in a while.
So as soon as they get the new cart, they can start using it?
Yes.
Okay. And then to dispose of the old carts?
Trash tag.
They have to put some kind of a note on it indicating, please take this can.
But it doesn't have to be a trash tag on it?
No.
Okay.
No, if it's the second garbage can and it had, both, your, your one can has garbage on your second one. Yes, you're going to have to put a trash tag on it and a note saying, please take everything.
Okay. No snow cones?
And no snow cones. Correct.
Okay. Questions?
And they do work on Saturdays too. So, uh, come Saturday, whatever the date that is, uh, the twenty-ninth or whatever. Uh, it could be delivered on a Saturday or on the sixth of October.
What's the start date, Dawn?
Monday, September twenty-fourth.
Okay. And what's the, what's the date that all, are these supposed to be done, Dawn?
They should be done by or prior to Saturday, October sixth.
Thanks, Dawn.
What color are these containers, Dawn?
Dark, dark gray with a dark blue lid.
Nice.
We have had people come down and ask if they come in NFL colors or college colors. And I figured there'd just be too much hijinks, mischievous, uh, mischievous acts if we allowed Iowa and Iowa State colors. Green Bay, Notre Dame, you know, there'd be a lot of, we'd have a lot of complaints about what's happened to my cart.
I guess if you were going to put trash in a cart, it would be dark blue and gold. So that would make the most sense.
Thank you.
Questions or concerns from the audience?
I'll take anything we can get.
Evidently red and white lately.
Counsel?
Thank you, Dawn.
Let's vote.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Murray? Uh, number eight is a resolution approving transfer of two hundred thousand of funds for costs associated with solid waste, uh, program cart purchase. Counselor?
I need a second.
Second?
Thanks. Counselor?
So I pulled this off, um, simply, and I brought it up last week. Um, I'm okay with, uh, moving some of that money, but I view two, two hundred thousand is too much, especially considering it's one-time money. I see that fund as a fund that over time will replenish itself. Um, I like the idea of having a buffer there. I understand the, the requirement to having that fifteen percent, but still that, that's not money that's going to be replaced on an annual basis. And we have no idea what's going to present itself over the next couple of years, whether it's deficiencies in the SAFER grant or projects that are brought to us by developers. Or parks that the community decides they want to get behind in order to fund, whatever it may be. Once that money goes in there, it's gone. So unless there's an immediate need for it, I'm okay with, like I said, moving fifty thousand dollars over. But two hundred thousand I see as, as a number that's more than it needs to be. So that's why I wanted to pull it off.
Before we get to you guys, comments, concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Or was last week, ma'am?
Yeah.
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it.
I mean, I understand what you're saying and I get it, but I also, I also, um, you know, trust Jim with his.
I trust him too.
Oh, I know. No, I wasn't, yeah. I'm just going to follow Jim's suggestion on this one.
I'm okay with it. I'm ready to stop talking trash for a while.
I don't think we're ever going to stop talking about trash.
We're good?
We're good.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Marie?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Brinker?
No.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. This brings us to comments from the audience. Is there anyone from the audience that has a comment? Pass me, pass counsel.
Yes, Tim Scott, twenty-seventeen South Fifteenth Street. I had to get up and be first because those chairs are killing me.
They're brutal.
They're horrible. I've been for years, been saying that for years, but. Counsel, according to Wikipedia, we have something in common with several communities in Iowa and several communities throughout the United States, about two hundred of them, but Bloomfield, Cedar Rapids, Clarence, Clinton, Dubuque, Fairfield, Leon, Mason City, Des Moines, Manly, Independence, Decora, Grundy City, Muscatine, Sioux City, Waterloo, Waverly, Woodbine, Fort Madison, Mount Pleasant. We had something in common with them. That they were, they were all, we were all recipients of a Statue of Liberty replica. And all of the communities I mentioned still have their Statue of Liberty on display. We don't. It's put away safely at Public Works. But I was reading Facebook the other day, and it was stated by a city employee that they're thinking about giving that to the Des Moines County Historical Society. I'm telling you, I don't want to see that happen. I want it back on the riverfront. We spent an awful lot of time, we spent an awful lot of citizens' money building that base, restoring that statue, and putting it back, putting it on the riverfront. And I want to read something from Wikipedia that says, today, many of the statues have been lost or destroyed, but preservationists have been able to account for more than a hundred of them. And the preservationist list was short, I know there's short quite a few, because Fort Madison, Mount Pleasant wasn't on there. Fort Madison's in Central Park on the southwest corner, or southeast corner of the park. And in Mount Pleasant, it stands in front of the Henry County Courthouse. The BSA Troop one oh one of Cheyenne, Wyoming have collected photographs of over a hundred of them, and Wikipedia, oh, Wikipedia's list is approaching a hundred and fifty examples. And that, that list that I mentioned was Wikipedia's, and that's where they, where it said they had, they were short Fort Madison and Mount Pleasant. Examples of statues can be found in Birmingham, Alabama, Fayetteville, Arkansas, Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Greeley, Colorado, and this is what it says in here, at the Mississippi Riverfront in Burlington, Iowa. And then it says at Overland Park, Kansas, and at Chembriazzo Park in Richmond, Virginia. They pointed out in Wikipedia, and all that information they put in there, they pointed out only where Burlington's is at, on the riverfront. It's, that's some free publicity for tourism, if nothing else. And liberty's still very important to an awful lot of people in this community and in this country, though we're losing more and more and more of it all the time. And I believe in liberty and freedom for all. And I will fight tooth and nail for freedom and liberty in this country. And I want something that I can go look at and that I can give a bath every July fourth, like I have for the last seventeen years. I want to continue to do that. And I would, before she gets put back up, I'd like to have her taken back in and repaired again. Someone has taken a couple of the, the spikes off of her head, and they've put another dent in her. I don't know if you see the picture that I had of her arm that, instead of being like this, was like this. Her chest, her feet, her abdomen had been stomped or punched and flattened. Her face had been flattened. The, the book that she held was torn in pieces, and part of it was gone. She stood from nineteen fifty to two thousand and two out at Dankirk Park, and it was, it was a beautiful stage was built for her. She wasn't elevated, people could walk right up to her. That, when, when we took her, took her down off that, decided to elevate her in hopes of keeping her from being damaged any further, they, they took down that old, that old stage, that old platform that she stood on. Still, it was gorgeous. And the, the base that was built was built by a mason that volunteered his services. And the, the material, as well as the restoration, was paid for by citizens of this community. Matter of fact, I believe there's about fifteen hundred dollars still in an account for maintaining her. What needs to happen is something that, that didn't happen was she needs to be waxed a couple times a year, and that'll, that'll keep her from turning that green, green, greenish color that she does. I tried, I tried using some, I can't remember what it's called, stuff that you brighten your, your silver with, copper.
Brasso?
Well, it wasn't brasso, it was a liquid, liquid kind. And she would shine right up like a brand-new penny for about fifteen seconds. And then that sun would hit that area that I had just done, and it turned, turned her back to patina or, or a dark color. So, the metallurgist that done the repair said that if you just use a simple car paste wax a couple of times a year, that that, that'll keep her bright and shiny. If you look at, if you look at the one in, in Mount Pleasant and other communities that I've been through, still kind of a brownish, shiny look to them, so they're doing, there's, they've done something either during restoration or on, on an annual basis, but. I, I, I hope that what, what you've. What I read on, on. What I read on Facebook wasn't true, that it wasn't even being considered. But I hope you will please keep an eye and an ear out for that and let me know in case I have to arm a militia or something to get our liberty back. That's, that's the picture that's, that's in Wikipedia for during the flood. I think it's perfect, it just, I, I, I had this, it enlarged the picture so it didn't, doesn't look real good, but. I just thought I would share that with you. I know you can't respond or say anything at this point. It's part of that liberty that I talked about, that we can't even communicate back and forth, that too many lawyers get involved, and they don't allow communication between citizens and their elected officials anymore.
I can say this, though, you brought this up when I was on the, when we were on the council together, and I was all in then. Nothing's changed with me, I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you all, I got to leave.
Thanks, Don.
I can quickly respond to that. I, I don't know who said whatever they said, but that, that Statue of Liberty's in the building that I oversee, and it isn't going anywhere. So, I would like some direction on what we're supposed to do with her.
Right on, right on.
You know, she does need some repairs. So. It's still in my building, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody else, comments from the audience? Mr. Sloan?
O N T Sloan, sixteen twenty-one South Fourteenth. I just, last week, I don't know if your last week was a work session or an actual council meeting?
Work session.
A work session. An item came up about reducing the free swim days, and I'd just like to talk about that just a little bit. I was looking at the article that came out in the Hawkeye where it talked about the shorter free swim days as being considered and some of the comments made. And I have a, you know, a list of two groups. This is Southeast, South, South Hill Organization, Neighborhood Organization, and also the Gentlemen's Club. I'm the secretary for the Gentlemen's Club. And we have been hosting a free swim day out there for twenty-one years. And we do it all our own. I know that the South Hill Neighborhood Organization, they've got a, you know, they've got a big grant, and they're, they're doing some swim lessons and having six free swim days out there last year and then also this year. But we fund all of ours through our, our club. And I'm going to do this because we have, you know, the Gentlemen's Club, and we wear shirts and caps and everything, and just like businesses and fraternal organizations, you know, you have a cap or shirt that says this or that. And when we formed the club, people would say Gentlemen's Club, and at that time, there was those clubs right across the river in Gulfport that were called Gentlemen's Club. So, we have a disclaimer, we're not that type of club. And over the years, we had to, we had a lot of people ask, well, what do you do? What, what's it about? So, we had some flyers made up. I'd like to give the council one of each one of these, to kind of let you know what we do and what we have done over the several years we've been in office, because you may not know just what to. I do have one or two left. If anybody else would like one. Also.
You can leave two on the media table.
Yeah, I'm going to leave two on there, because I was looking at the article last week, and it says the Gentlemen's Club, and it's capital G, capital C, not small C and G. So, that was brought up in, stated that way in the club, in the thing last week. But, you know, like I said, we've been doing this. The club was founded in, let me get my one. In nineteen ninety-one, at the time when there were several Champion Spark Plugs was closing down a plant in Toledo, Ohio. And they transferred that work here to Burlington. And there were several, there were several hundred people transferred from there to here, and some of the men and women that were transferred were, Toledo was a bigger community, they had a lot to do, they were seventy-five miles from Detroit. They got here in Iowa, and they wondered what the heck we're going to do here in Iowa. So, they were used to having a lot of social things and stuff. And so, the, the men formed a club. You can read about it, but I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, but, you know, over the years, it was just a social club. We'd meet, we still meet once a month. At, when we first started, we didn't really have a place, and we just met at the members' homes. And then it was always on a Sunday, and the fall of year, this time of year was nice, because after the meet, we'd have a little social hour at the house, maybe watch the first half or the first football game on Sunday afternoon, and then we'd be done. But anyway, over the years that we've been hosting our swim club, we've only had two incidents where we had to have a problem. One year, there was a, they said it was a homeless lady that was walking around the locker rooms where people change clothes there and was messing around. That got taken care of right away with the golf, or the, us, and then also the workers there at the swimming pool, the lifeguards, and we got the police out there, and the lady eventually got taken care of. One other time, we did have a scuffle or some arguments with some people, we handled it. When we're out there, and we've been renting, we take that eastern shelter house right next to the fence on the east side. We get the city, Brad's been great with us, he's been with us since, what, I think, two thousand and two. And we get a few extra park benches there. We supply our own, we get a grill, we have free food, hot dogs, chips, cookies, and drinks, punch until it's gone. The lifeguards come out and have food. We're not losing any money with the concession stands, we're bringing people there, and we're paying for it. We've been paying for it, like I said, and then the last, this year, we got into that six hundred dollar fee, and we paid our six hundred dollars to have our free swim there, just like the South Hill Community Organization did for their six days. And I just want, I, this, you know, Hawkeye, on July the twelfth, they put a nice little, in Up and Out and What Happens, they put a little picture of our nineteen ninety-five, June, June twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, picture of kids swimming, and I just think, and we think that if you start shortening the swim day, what it's looking like to us is that dome's going up, and you're going to have these, the swim class or this, these meets and stuff, and it's going to drive us and the other, the South Hill, out of business, because you're going to have people doing a lot of meets and. Well, I'm just saying, when you see this, and you, it says that there are a lot of, a lot of problems with fights or disturbances out there, and I don't know, like I said, I just know about ours. I don't know about what, what's going out there with the South Hill Community Organizations. I do know one of our members is the president of that, and I haven't heard anything from him about having a lot of problems out there with people, but kids. But anyway, as you read over this, what we're about and what we've done, we've also hosted for the last twenty-four years, we've given out scholarships to graduating seniors here in Burlington and around. We started that in nineteen ninety-four. We've given out scholarships to kids up in BHS, of course, Notre Dame, Fort Madison, West Burlington, Minneapolis. And also, this year, we had an application come in from Mount Pleasant. So, we've been doing that, and then we funded with our, our scholarship was funded with a golf tournament. For nineteen years, we've been having a golf tournament, four-man best shot, or four-person best shot, because we do have some ladies out there golfing. And out of the nineteen years, eighteen years, it's been at Flint Hills. One year was down in Shafers, but we stay here in Burlington, and we do, we do have a good turnout. Brad does a good deal out there, people are good out there, and I'm so glad that the council didn't try to sell that golf course this past year. You know, there's some talk about that, but I'm glad that didn't work out, because it's a nice course, and it's a city course, and I think it's good. But anyway, I, we just hope that this, you're thinking on this and shortening down the days, and this doesn't, doesn't go, because South Hill, you know, they do, they had six days, and if this swim club gets in and the dome goes up and all that kind of stuff that's been talked about happens, we just see that our days are numbered, and I hope that's not the case. So, I have any questions about, for me, on our, my talk about swim days and our club? I hope you read the pamphlet. Like I said, we had to do that because, you know, especially when we're handing out scholarships, and we see some grandmas and grandfathers and mothers and parents out there, and they say, here's a club, a scholarship from the Gentlemen's Club, you know, I had to make that disclaimer. We're not that type of Gentlemen's Club that you might be concerned about, that's in, some people frequent. We do stuff generally, and if you look at what we've donated, our donation to, to several organizations here in Burlington over the years, Step Red Travelers and the, we've donated money to St. Jude's Children's Hospital, American Cancer Institute, Veterans Memorial Downtown. We also did food baskets for, at Christmas time, to needy families, we got the names from the Salvation Army. But we, we did that for a couple of years, and we had to stop that because we were dropping off a food basket, and somebody else was going into the same house and drop off another basket, so we kind of got out of that. But we did do it for several years. We donate to NAACP, we helped out Dragon Boat Team, sponsored them. We sponsored contestants in the Little Miss and Miss Burlington Beauty Pageants over the years. And we do stuff for kids, and we just hope that this, what was mentioned last week about having trouble out there, we just want to see if there was trouble out there, it wasn't our trouble. And hopefully, the days will be kept the same for people to have a free, free swim days, because like you, you got that up, you upped the price to six hundred dollars, and that was a little bit more than we were paying, but we paid it. And the South Hill Neighborhood Association has paid it, too. And I'll, I'll say this, too, you know, that pool was in very, very bad shape a few years back. And the council at that time decided to just let it sit, and you put in a lot of money with Mr. Weingard out there and with Fund City, and you got tied up in that, and finally, you got out of that and got some of your money back. I do remember. And now you've got, you know, a couple of years back, you resurfaced the floor in the pool, so the kids ain't scuffing up their feet when they're walking around it, and got a new pump in it. And I just hope that the city keeps it going, because it is an attraction and a draw, especially to kids in the summertime. And with that, I'm open for any questions, comments? If there's anyone in the audience, I do have a few flyers, pamphlets left, if you would like to have one. You can see me afterwards, and I'll be glad to give you what I have.
Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
We can't get into a. appreciates the Gentlemen's Club, that was never, that was never at, you know, I don't, I don't know how you, what you read or how you read that, but that was never an issue, so, I just want to, I just want to make that publicly said since you came down.
Well, it was just a general, you know, and the only two people that, or two organizations that are missing was the two that I mentioned, us.
I'll talk to you after the meeting, I'll, I'll let you know the deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience, comments or concerns? Mr. Tisland?
We have a Heritage Hill walking tour this Saturday, at two P M., starting at North Hill Park. This is kind of in conjunction with the historic guidelines that were recently approved by council, trying to get some more information out on that as well, but just a tour in the Heritage Hill District of North Hill, approximately a one-mile tour, feature different architectural styles, talk about the characteristics of the neighborhood, so we welcome anyone that's interested in history and architecture to come on out, and there'll be a guided walking tour throughout the Heritage Hill District on Saturday.
That it?
Yep.
That's plenty. Kathleen? Counselor?
Last week, I went to the League of Cities Annual Convention in Council Bluffs. Charlie Nichols, Jim, myself went, and it was phenomenal. When they talk about there being a tremendous learning curve, when you first get elected to council, they're not kidding, and that really helped me learn a lot, both personally and professionally, so I really, really enjoyed attending that. This weekend, we're looking at, one of the boats is docking Saturday, is it the American Queen? I can't remember the name of it, somebody will fill in the blanks for me there. And then also, I just read in the library brochure, thank you, Rhonda, they're going to have a cake pan rental program. How cool is that? I know when my boys were small, we always, I always loved to bake cakes and decorate them, and it gets, get kind of pricey, but you can rent a cake pan for three weeks, and all kinds of books on how to decorate those cakes, and just really have a fun hobby for not spending a lot of money, so, thank you, Rhonda, and your crew, great idea.
Man, did you see the chief's eyes light up when you talked about renting those cake pans?
That's because he's hungry, it's past his dinnertime.
Counselor? It's Monday Night Football, bear down, I got to go. MPT.
I worked that last week, too.
I'm going to be gone next Monday.
Okay. We'll miss you.
Thank you.
Just come back safe. That's all you got?
Yeah.
Counselor? James?
Oh, I, wait, what can I do? Rotary Chicken Barbecue, this Thursday.
I got my tickets.
Oh, shoot.
You've got to work that, don't you?
Yes, forgot, I don't have it on my schedule.
You better put it on there, brother. Assistant City Manager, Nick McGregor?
One quick thing that you maybe have seen or have heard from people, Mount Pleasant Street HMA, between Roosevelt and Gere, has not gone very well for us. A subcontractor last week was removed from the job, and a new subcontractor was placed in, so what they've been doing is doing some full-depth patching, so it doesn't look like a whole lot's been going on, but they've been, you know, replacing some of the areas that need to be, they should start paving next week, so you should actually see some, some movement going on that. And then Agency Street, quite a lot has happened in the last couple of days, you know, some nicer weather, and they've been pouring, actually poured the inside closer to the intersection of Roosevelt and Agency today, so, things are moving, it's just things took a while, and then that rain really kicked things back, so...
Thank you, sir.
Eric, the team of building?
It's not a tremendous update on that, had back and forth with the owner today, still hasn't received full access to the building yet. I think they're still on the insurance side, working through all of that, so, having a message into the insurance company as well, trying to get a timeframe on that, but he doesn't have full access to the site. His conversation last week was, he does have an, or gonna hopefully have an engineer on hand right away to evaluate the existing structure, and he's indicated he, too, wants to see the street open up as soon as possible, but we need to work through that process. But until he actually gets ownership or control of the building, he has ownership, but gets possession of the building back, he, he can't do anything with the site.
Yeah, so, I, not much to be able to update beyond it, we're kind of stuck waiting for the insurance investigation, which is still...
Whether it's investigation or just the insurance company in general, getting there.
Wanting to have it, waiting to, just in case. I don't know exactly where they are in it, but they still have a piece that they're waiting on to see what, whatever potentials they're looking at. Charlie did present last week, which is why he went to the Iowa League of Cities meeting, talked about our nuisance abatement. If folks here think that nuisance abatement is a significant issue to deal with, or has been over time, you're not alone in that, there are nine hundred some communities, and about all of them, deal with struggle through the nuisance abatement process. One of the things that Charlie was really hitting on was the, was it the Healthy Neighborhoods? Is that the title, title of that initiative that he started this year? That is something that he wrote an article on that was in the Cityscape Magazine, I think in June. I don't know if you, hopefully you noticed it, but if you didn't, you could go back and take a look at it. There are a lot of folks who were really interested in that, and that was what they wanted him to be able to talk on, and his session was fairly well-attended, for a Friday morning at eight o'clock. It was, it won, I would say it probably had the highest attendance of the morning sessions. And yes, he was, had reports back, he did a very good job. Staff there said that he did a very good job on that. There's a sign over there, Great Places designation, of course, just a reminder, we had, received that last year. We, Charlie and I attended their annual meeting today. We will be talking about potential projects to bring forward, he had mentioned, I mean, he talked about that back in July, and that's something that, as we move through the next month or two, we'll be coming back for action, on whether we're going to have an application, official application go in or not, associated with the riverfront. That's a designation that we have specifically for the riverfront, that was based off of the, when we initially went after flood funding, for the flood wall. And a reminder for those of you who may have an interest, Wednesday, the Chamber has their State of the Economy luncheon down Spirit Hollow, I think that's eleven thirty. You're certainly welcome to attend. If you haven't registered to it and you want to attend, please let, I think it's Belinda at the Chamber, no. So, and I think that's it for what I have for today, so...
Okay. Well, that's it for me. You guys have been lovely tonight, we appreciate your participation. Can I get a motion?
Motion close.
Second.
Move to second twice. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
All right, thank you, this meeting's adjourned.